Good evening, everybody. Well, good night, however you want to put it. This is the DC in Smoke coming to you live on Tuesday night, October 8th, 2025. Uh, give me a few minutes, let people come on, so just stay tuned. I'm in my car, so um, just bear with me. Good evening, everybody. This is the DC in Smoke coming to you live on October the 7th. I get my days mixed up. I believe I might have said October the 8th a few minutes ago, but today, October 7th, 2025. Oh, what a beautiful day. Elections, Rocky Mount City Council Municipal, Municipal Election 2025. Uh, gonna get a few more people, wait till a few more people come on. Just want to come on briefly and share the election results. So just give me a few more minutes, I can say I'm in the car. Um, yes, oh, what a beautiful day. It is in the city of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. Woah, yeah. Yes, sir. Give a, take a few more minutes. I ain't gonna be here long, uh, uh, McCoy. You can always go back and look in it. Ain't gonna be long. 2213, at 2215, that is 10:15, I will begin with the election results. Rocky Mount City Council Municipal Elections, 2025. Yes, sir. Good to me. Um, yes, sir. One more minute, y'all. Then I'm gonna give you about 10 minutes and then I'm gonna come back tomorrow, uh, during the day, uh, with more on the results of the air, uh, the, uh, Rocky Mount Municipal Election. One minute, y'all, not quite one minute. Started 2215, which is 10:15. I got my car, I set my clock to military time when I start working, um, um, on my job, they were using military time, so I've been using it. Okay, it's 10:15, y'all, 20, 20, 25 hour. All right, y'all, this is a briefing on the Rocky Mount City Council Municipal Election Results. Um, I'm gonna start off with, uh, with, uh, Ward 7 and work my way down. Ward 7 incumbent Jabaris J. Kelly Walker had 375 votes, 61% uh, to Dr. Thelma Lee Bullock, 229, um, 37.66%. Um, I don't think that was bad for the first time, uh, getting into politics. But what I do know, oh, let me, let me, let me go, I'm gonna go to, going down to Ward 6. That was Ward 7, uh, J. Kelly, 375, Thelma Bullock, 229. J. Kelly got 61% to her, 37%, so that cannot, uh, be a runoff in that election. Um, that was Ward 7. Ward 6, Tom Harris, 687 votes to Shanice Cotton, 251. Uh, Tom Harris, 72%, Shanice Cotton, 26%. Again, that's Tom Harris, 687 votes, 72%, Shanice Cotton, 251, 26%. So there cannot be a runoff in that election. As long as a person get 50 plus 1% of the votes, um, they cannot call for a, uh, the top person get 50 plus 1, uh, vote, the, um, runner-up cannot get, um, cannot call for a runoff. But, um, I am really saddened by, uh, um, those two, those two wars. When there were two vote, uh, a candidate's form held in Rocky Mount and neither one included Ward 6 or Ward 7, they were both, uh, just for Ward 3. As if Ward 3 got more than one vote. I didn't, I couldn't figure that out. I was contacted about both of them. Uh, I refuse to, to, um, record either simply for the fact that those two wars were left out. So I wonder, um, uh, when those two wars results been any, been different if they had have been heard? I don't understand. What I do understand, neither one of the Democratic Parties, uh, held, held a form. Now, I'm talking about Democratic Party now, because, um, uh, I know, um, uh, Thelma is, I don't know about Shanice, I would assume, and I know J. Kelly is. Uh, um, I don't understand why neither party didn't have a candidate's form for those two sisters. I don't get it. But what I do know is, um, uh, the Nash County Democratic Women did, I think, endorse, uh, Shanice Cotton, but I know they were not going to endorse Thelma Bullock simply because of the connection between J. Kelly and former Judge, uh, um, Quinn Sumner. So I knew they would not endorse him, uh, endorse, uh, Thelma Bullock. I don't understand why the Ministerial Labs and other organizations, uh, didn't have, um, a forum in the future. I hope the Rocky Mount Human Relations Commission have a forum that would be, uh, um, a good place to have it coming from the Rocky Mount Human Relations Commission, which is a makeup of people from the Edgecombe and Nash County side. Matter of fact, that mean is tomorrow. Think I'm gonna go and, um, and suggest that. Maybe they'll have one for the upcoming runoff, because I'm quite sure, um, um, Carl Revis will call for a runoff. But anyway, I'm gonna be brief, because like I said, I'm gonna come back tomorrow, uh, um, um. But so I'm gonna move on down to, uh, the Ward 3. Let me go to Ward, uh, 2, get it on out of the way. Um, Reverend Blackwell had no opposition, um, he did great, so I'm not gonna spend no time on that. And I'm gonna move on to Ward 3. My, 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 you had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Seven candidates for Ward 3 to, uh, uh, fill the seat of, um, I should have cut off my notifications. Um, uh, to fill the seat that will be vacant by Reverend Richard Joiner, who chose not to, uh, seek reelection. So let me move on through this thing. Uh, Krista Wyves Anderson got 7 votes. Krista Wyves Anderson got 7 votes, 1.12%. Naylin Richardson got 11 votes, 1.77%. Tim Barnes, the only Republican, uh, got 17 votes, 2.73%. Xavieran Jones, 30 votes, 4.82%. Now I want you to hear that again. Krista Wyves Anderson, she ran in the last election against, um, um, Richard Joiner. She got 7 votes, 1.12%. Naylin Richardson, uh, first time running, 11 votes, 1.77%. Tim Barnes, 17 votes, 2.73%, the only Republican. Xavieran Jones, 30 votes, 4.82%. Moving right along. Bronson Williams, 152 votes, 24.40%. Carl Revis, 172 votes, 27.61%. Charles Verb Robertson, 234 votes, 37.56%. Now let me run by that again. Bronson Williams, 152 votes, 24.40%. Carl Revis, 172 votes, 27.61%. Charles Verb Robertson, 234 votes, 37.56%. The top two vote-getters are Charles Robertson, 234, Carl Revis, 172. By Robertson only got 37.56% to Carl Revis, 27.61%. It must be a 50 plus 1. That did not happen. So Carl Revis can request for a runoff. I gotta call him. That was my candidate. Um, retired policeman, Rocky Mount, people talking about crime. I think he would bring a whole new perspective to the board. Um, uh, you had, you got Tom, um, Harris, who's a banker. He bring his expertise to the board. I just hope he, uh, to the council, I hope he, um, do better of, uh, holding the city managers and others accountable than he did in, uh, leading up to now with the situation that we have with the finance. Charles Verb Robertson, um, his first time running also. Um, he ran off of downtown and, and, and all that, but, um, again, I, uh, support Carl Robertson because I think they need a police perspective on the board. Um, the other, other ones are already, uh, um, um, they're, they, they, they may not be experts on it, but they, they know what they're doing when it comes to, uh, other stuff. So, um, I feel like Carl Revis, uh, needs to be appointed to, not appointed, but, um, uh, in the runoff. I feel like Carl Revis would be the best of the two. Um, you know, Robertson will do a good job, but I just think we need that, um, that expertise coming from law enforcement that would be very helpful to the board. Now, before I get out of here, I done gave y'all the results and I'm gonna go back through again. I'm just gonna touch on them and then I got something I want to say and then I'm gonna shut it down. Uh, I'll go back to, um, Ward 7. Tom Harris, uh, is, um, retaining his seat. 687 votes to Shanice Cotton, 251, that's Ward 7, I mean, Ward 6. Ward 7, J. Kelly, Jabaris Kelly, J. Kelly Walker, uh, received, um, 375 votes to Thelma Bullock, 229, um, he's retaining his seat. And then the, um, vacant, that will be vacant as of, um, 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 Richard Joiner, who did not receive, who did not seek reelection. But now I want to touch on, uh, uh, something that, that, um, um, that, um, I had been working with this young man, been in spaces. I told him not to run against Shelley Willingham some years ago because he had not been acting in the party. He did get active in the party, um, um, um. We used to talk before the city council meetings in Rocky Mount over the years, going back to, uh, uh, over the years. Um, until, um, he threatened me in the city cha-chambers, uh, uh, one night. Um, and then, um, before then though, he and, uh, uh, Nevermind, Neema Smith, Reverend Neema Smith, I had went to them a couple of years ago and told them that people, uh, was talking about the format of the, um, talk show, W N C R T V, and they got mad with me and they did a whole damn week's show on me. Had a dog baby out there, had me crying and all this kind of foolishness. And see, I'll tell folk, hey, everybody that has come up against me, they got theirs. And those that have come up against me that ain't got theirs is coming. But, um, uh, um, the ones that were closest to me, uh, um, um, they have gotten theirs. I'm talking about them races all their own, uh, Rockin' Mountain Concerned Citizens and places now, uh, um, but I'm talking about the black folk that had come up against me, oh, it's stupid this man. All I did was try to support them all the years and, and, and because I come to folk and let them know, uh, what the people are saying, uh, uh, they get mad with me. But, um, yeah, this guy, he, um, him and Neema Smith, uh, did a whole week talk show about me and I didn't do nothing to those guys. Um, I tried to tell him, Bronson Williams, don't do it, but this make the third time he has ran for office and has been defeated. I wonder how many more times he gonna go. Um, Neema Smith, uh, he been missing in action. Maybe that might be what Bronson needed to do. Uh, I hear about, uh, he been coming on twice a day with the talk show, morning and evening, and had a whole talk show all these years and still cannot win a seat on the Rocky Mount City Council. But he was in a good position at one time until he turned on us. Yes, until he turned on us. Uh, uh, just saying. Um, uh, uh, Dr. Canova, I, 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 I don't want to hear that about we don't support one Democrat over another. It can be done in a, in a municipal election, uh, it can be done and it has been done. And I can, y'all, you and, uh, uh, um, uh, my chair a couple of years ago and, and I showed you where it was, they were doing it up in Wake County, so I don't, I don't, I don't want to hear that. It can be done. It can be done. And all I said about the party was that you all could have had a candidate's form. I said the Democratic Women, uh, uh, supported, um, those guys. So, uh, but the Democratic Party can, they can endorse, I mean, they can, uh, support one over other, especially in a, in a, uh, any election, but especially in a municipal election where it's non-partisan. I've been in the Democratic Party here, uh, in, uh, uh, in the state of North Carolina, uh, in Edgecombe County since the late, uh, uh, 80s, so I know how the process work. I attended the Edgecombe County meetings, I used to go to Nash County meetings, I used to go to Wilson County meetings, and I also went to the state meetings, so I know how the process work. But that's, he's a, neither, neither here or there now, uh, uh, that's not my point. I just, um, I know what I know, I stand behind what I know. But again, um, um, uh, getting back to Bronson Williams, I, I, I have tried to support him. Uh, I try to support young folk, but when they disrespect me, then I talk to them. But, uh, uh, the trust is gone. Uh, we had the, uh, Edgecombe County Democratic Party, uh, elections back, uh, for the county officers. Um, I put my name in the hat the day of just to, uh, see how people will vote. Uh, Brother Cook gave me one, one vote out of all his he had, but he didn't. But as soon as that was over, he been talking to me and sending me messages ever since. Uh, even asked me had I ever thought about having a, uh, uh, setting up a debate. I said, mm, that, that sound good, but I know I'm gonna do it, because we don't do debates around here. Ain't nobody got time for no debate, just do a regular candidate's form. Then he asked me did Edgecombe County Democratic Party ever have a candidate's form? I said, no, the Tarberry, the Tarberry or Edgecombe County Human Relations always have a candidate's form every, every election. And I said, get with your boy Roosevelt Higgs. I said, he can tell you, because he was on the Human Relations Commission up until he end up finally changing his, uh, uh, voter registration to Nash County. After all them years, he was living in Nash County, but still claiming Edgecombe County as his resident. And it was Bronson Williams who told me where he live at over there on, uh, uh, over there in Rocky Mount. Um, um, but he round here challenging every damn day on the videos, on, on the TV station, I understand. He still challenging Andre Knight residency when Andre sued the county and the, uh, um, the lawsuit says Knight versus Higgs. The county had to pay, uh, Knight, um, attorney fees. It's documented. Type in Knight versus, uh, Higgs and you'll see the law, uh, case that come up. Um, so, uh, I've been there, done that. Uh, I challenge anybody in Edgecombe, Nash County when it come to politics. And I told folk when they run for something, they need to talk to me. Folk said, who he think he is? Well, you'll see. Don't talk to me, because I can either help you or hurt you to a certain degree or, or be neutral. But, um, don't worry about it. You ain't gotta talk to me. But what I do know, if you making decision on my livelihood and my family livelihood, folk talking about why I'm into Rocky Mount, I've been attending Rocky Mount City Council meeting longer than any of the council members up there. I've been venting on out of pocket all these years since the nineties. So damn right, I'm gonna keep on coming to the meetings, uh, attend the Rocky Mount Human Relations Commission. I don't, they don't even, uh, recall that means, but I do. Even after I came off the council, I, I still recall them. So, yeah, um, um, I'm gonna do what I do, because I like getting the information out there so people can see it for them seeing through my videos. Do them live, then put them on, uh, YouTube. But I got family, I probably got more family rocking out than some of y'all do. Got some heavy hitters family, uh, uh, Haram Bay Square, my folk. Uh, so, um, um, uh, if you don't know, now you know. But I'm gonna get ready to shut it down, but, um, folk, I done told y'all, uh, I wasn't born on Christmas Day for nothing. God been good to me. Because I been out here trying to, uh, represent, uh, uh, bring about awareness, give you the, uh, um, the videos so you can see the means for yourself and what this tickle me. A video on the means, then people ask me what happened. Damn, look at it. I gotta go video the means out of pocket, uh, uh, spending my own money, my own equipment, and then you gonna ask me what happened? Look at the video. But better than that, you ought to go to the meetings. I don't just recall Rocky Mount meetings, I recall all over the county. I was in the county commission meeting, uh, Monday night in Tarberry. I showed them, I told them they only had 13 people that had watched their video on YouTube and I had over 500 people. I got a follower. That's right. I got 10 pages, because people stay lined up to do on my main page. I could change it, but I'm not gonna change it. I just got different pages of, uh. But anyway, y'all, I'm, I'm ready to get out of here, but again, um, I am somewhat happy about the election tonight and for anybody that just came on. Uh, J. Kelly Walker, uh, retained his seat, 375 votes to Thelma Bullock, 229, that's Ward 7. Um, Ward 6 is, uh, um, Tom Harris, 687 votes to Shanice Cotton, 251. Neither one of those, Ward 6 or Ward 7, uh, the, um, um, cannot, uh, ask for a runoff. Um, Ward 3, uh, Charles Robertson, 234, Carl Revis, 172, Bronson Williams, 152. Um, Xavieran Jones, 30, Tim Barnes, 17, the only Republican, Naylin Richardson, 11, Krista Wyves Anderson, 7. Um, Charles Robertson and, um, Carl Revis, Carl Revis can request a runoff. I look forward to it. I support him during this election and I will support him during the runoff. Because I believe that a, the council needs a person with law enforcement experience on the council. So I'll be back on tomorrow probably, um, to talk about elections again. So I'll be back on tomorrow probably, um, to talk about elections again. So y'all have a good night. This has been Late Night Live, the D C in Smoke. Thank you.